I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have, I see, one addition with the senior center.
We're going to change out the Lake County Chamber time for an update from the Lake County Senior Center. And we have also taken off the Schmuck Museum transfer. That was already previously approved.
Yes. Nine o'clock, employee recognition.
Well, before we get started, just take a moment and think back thirty-five years, where we were at thirty-five years ago. I know I was in the fourth grade. I was ten years old. Some of us were born, some of us weren't, some of us had a full head of hair, Jay. With color besides silver. Nevertheless, thirty-five years ago, June twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-one, Pam was hired here in Lake County in the juvenile department. And for the last thirty-five years, she's served with dedication and loyalty, not only to the county, but to the citizens and the youth within the county. And she's done her job diligently and with passion. So Lake County is honored to present you, Pam, with a certificate of appreciation for thirty-five years of service to Lake County and our citizens, as well as some service year pins for five, ten, fifteen, and twenty, because we just got those in. And we have ordered her, I let Pam pick it out, a little plaque, clock type gizmo, that will be in soon. And when that comes in, we'll have the board commissioners present that to her as well. So Pam, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, Jay.
To the county.
Thanks to family and friends and coworkers for everything, for helping me make it thirty-five years.
And Pam, special thanks from the community at large.
So look forward to another thirty-five years. So Pam, thirty-five years, that's incredible, as you and I've worked together for sixteen of those. Just last week, I believe I sat in your office reflecting on some things. I don't know that the public and the people realize what you've done for Lake County over thirty-five years. The people you've worked with, the directors you've worked with, but primarily the juveniles you've been a part of. Even with my number of years, I still don't fully understand everything that you do, as we talked the other day. The amount of dollars you've saved our county, our citizens, our taxpayers by helping some of these youth and some of the things you've done is just incredible. The more I understand, the more I appreciate the juvenile department. And my appreciation to you for what you've done individually is very high on my list of thanks. So thank you very much for Lake County. Thank you for what you do in thirty-five years. That's monumental. I come from a way of life where normally you go to work, then eventually retire from there. You've got to live that and do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you for, on behalf of the youth.
Now you get to stay for another three hours.
We're circumventing the three hours, not three hours. No other time items?
Um, Andrew is on at nine oh five.
Nine oh five?
Nine oh five.
Pam, did you have one or two?
Couple, but they do okay. I think the two things I have before you is the auditor engagement letter and contract, which can, uh...
Yes.
Has the chair signed before they appeared on site on June thirtieth, so it just needs to be ratified. And then the second thing I have before you is Resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero four, which is actually a accounting procedure and policy that I should have had when we adopted and appropriated. It establishes how dollars are spent in the current fiscal year from that ending balance. So it's just an accounting standard that's required.
Go with the person you have.
Okay, so you should have that before you. There's two documents, the engagement letter and the auditor contract. The auditor contract is the standard one with a little bit of a cost inflation that they do every year. And then the engagement letter actually spells out what their responsibilities are during the process and what management's responsibilities are. It is important for you to understand that engagement letter. You know, I think we think auditors look at every single transaction. They don't. They look at a representation of the work that's done, so.
And they change up each year a little bit?
Uh, there's certain things they look at every single year. There's probably a certain emphasis that they're going to look at every year, and that changes. They'll pick a different federal program to do the, what they call the eighty-one thirty-three audit. That's the single audit for the federal compliance. So it's just important to understand what their process is.
Has it varied any from that year?
Uh, the contract and the engagement letter, no. The contract, like I said, probably just went up with a little bit of inflation.
I, on the ratification of that, we should go ahead and do that today, Commissioner, so I'll move to accept the... Is it two different things, engagement letter and the...
Yeah.
So probably should be two different ratifications. So I'd move to approve the engagement letter with Oscar provisional group presented.
Any other discussion? All right.
Aye. I move to ratify and approve the audit contract that was presented with Oscar provisional group.
Any other discussion? Where they be here?
So they were here on site on both June thirtieth, and then they came July eleventh and twelfth, and they'll be back on Columbus State October, I think that's October tenth. And they'll be here that, most of that week. So our fiscal year fifteen sixteen has to be kind of around and available much longer than usual.
And at that time, they usually do the exit interview in October?
Yeah.
And what week was that? I'm sorry.
It's October tenth, so I would look on that Thursday and see if people are available. That's typically exit interview day.
Motion, second, all right.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand sixteen zero four.
So every year we approve this resolution that establishes policies for fund balances. It's according to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Fifty-four, which tried to clarify when you have a fund that has several types of revenue streams in that one fund, what revenue streams are spending first. So this would dictate that we're going to spend restricted dollars first, which is typically grants, federal, something like that. And then the last.
What audience, when you say restricted fund, I always like to make sure the audience, restricted funds are funds that are restricted to one purpose.
Yes. Yep, so it's federal or grant technically, and then unrestricted is general dollars, which could come from general fund or just revenues that are general in nature for that fund. We have, there's a couple other definitions of fund balances.
This is all in compliance with GASB fifty-four, and this is normal operating procedures that we do. Tomorrow, we'll make a motion on this one.
And GASB is what you said, it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board?
Yes.
Thank you, Pam. Senior Center. Good morning.
Good morning. I just thought maybe I could take a minute to give you a brief update of what's been going on at the senior center. I mean, we've been getting a lot of questions about the fleet that's parked behind us in the parking lot, and where it's going, and how that's all working. But I just wanted to make sure you guys know, we're in the process of the newest two vans getting insured and licensed and all of that, so they're sitting there. And then two of the vehicles, the vans, one of the Ford that came maybe in like February-ish, and the newer ones are going to the north part of the county. So one to serve as a backup, and then the other to be used because our driver is in Summer Lake, and she would have it near her to kind of commute to picking up people as she goes along the way, and get to the larger bus, which will be, I'm thinking, Christmas Valley, and, you know, be more economic driving that way. And it's a, it's a nice vehicle to drive rather than the big bus. And so working with Denise and Gondal, we're kind of organizing that. But at the moment, it looks like we have a lot of vehicles, and we do, we now have seven.
Across the county body?
Yeah, so the transportation program is growing wildly. It's awesome. With the VA grant and of course all the ODOT money that we get, we have lots and lots of funding coming our way, but we're using it wisely. And that's the tricky part of the VA grant was, we received forty-five thousand dollars that we had to use in about three months. Well, that's a year's worth of money, but we had to use it up really quickly because we came into the end part of the grant. So I'm tasked with coming up with ideas to spend this money that aren't, that are sound, good business choices, and that also are sustainable. So if we implement all these new kinds of trips, then when the new year starts and we have a year to use all that money, we don't want to be, you know, scrambling for money or canceling programs that we started. So we're really putting a lot of thought into using this money now, and then how we're laying out the plan for the following years, because it's a renewable grant. So we're blessed with the good fortune of having money, but we're challenged with using it wisely. So we've used about, I think, a quarter of the funds, and we have a month and a half to pretty much wrap up the rest of it. And they're telling me, "You could buy a vehicle, you could buy a vehicle." And we looked at our parking lot, "We don't need a vehicle." So we're really trying to, you know, new tires, new things that they're going to need going forward, and doing what is about that kind of thing.
I respect that you have this much money, you've got this much time to spend it, and you're trying to spend it diligently and wisely. If you don't quite spend it, does that adversely affect the next year's?
It does. So if we only are able to spend thirty thousand, then next year they only offer us thirty thousand. So we're working on that.
Are you going to meet that?
Yes. We're going to meet somehow, some way. We're going to meet it. But as of today, I've hired a coordinator person for transportation, so that'll be a useful amount of the money. And for VA, of course, and the ODOT trips, and just to help with some of the reporting and all that kind of stuff, so I'm really excited about that.
Well, the sake of the folks on, and the audience on the camera, and the back there at home watching, can you give a short synopsis of who rides the bus?
Well, we get a lot of seniors, but quite a few disabled people. And then we have just people that want to go to Columbus, someone getting their car worked on, and they had to leave it at the dealership over there, and they need a ride back over. Our senior bus will take you. We go four times a month. It's usually on Tuesdays, but we have trips going over to the doctor and all kinds of stuff.
What criteria would be a senior, a handicap, or a veteran, once you've got some, any one of those, and any gynecologist in life?
Those are kind of our priority, yes. But on our scheduled trips, we take anyone, you know, any age, because...
We just take one person?
We have, and that's why it's nice to have those smaller vans. But we take one person for a doctor's appointment. If it's medical, if you're, if it's medical and you're a senior, disabled, or a veteran, we'll take you wherever you need to go. But when it's, you know, shopping or something a little less focused on our core goals there, we like to have three or four people at least. But we did recently a trip to Bend, and we had three people with doctor's appointments, and then we filled up the bus with people that wanted to go shopping. So that was a good way for people to get out of town and those to get their medical appointments.
How well can you broadcast it so generally a person is fully aware of the program?
The radio, and we've done a little bit of newspaper ads, but I'm glad you mentioned it. We received just yesterday, we ordered it through the VA funds, a giant monitor to have in the senior center. Yeah, that encourages people to come off the sidewalk and into the senior center, but where we're going to have a slide presentation of when our trips are going, what the meals are, you know, our whole building programs. But you could always, if you don't, you know, want to walk into the building, you could call. Pretty much anyone that answers the phone would be able to tell you when the next trip is and how it all works. But that's the key part of having a person in charge of the transportation, our dispatcher, the planner. I'm not really sure what that title that she'll have, but she'll be, you know, first on all that information.
So how are you doing on people, the drivers? I know it's always a challenge to have drivers and everything, and does that start to fall into place pretty good for you, or is it just always going to be challenging to have the people that have the responsibility to do it, probably?
Yeah, I think it's always going to be a little bit challenging. We have a good crew now, but I'm looking to bring an additional person on board. And I'm thinking with the two new vans in the north part of the county, we'll probably be looking at another driver up there. That would just make sense to have a backup for the driver there. It's tricky because the pay isn't fabulous, and the hours, we don't pay if they're not driving. So it's just the nature of the beast, but we've been fortunate with the crew that we have now and that we...
Well, we're very fortunate that you worked really hard on that in Denise and getting the dollars here in this state. Federal dollars has come down to have a fleet that you have. For you to manage that and try to keep the people is quite a challenge too, but it's encouraging that people are asking, "What are the, what's going on there?" Because some of them may be a little bit negative, but they're starting to say, "Oh, well, we might have more opportunities." This is a great opportunity for all of Lake County, the ridership, you know. When people get the opportunity to get on your planned trips to go to Columbus or other places, that's great. So we encourage you to continue to enhance that and work on it. And I know Denise has trainings that you guys go together, so it's great, very good.
And on the main corridors, like one forty, two K Falls, the third one, and all the communities that touches it, Christmas Valley, it goes to Bend. You also have services out to Poshville, that's kind of off the main track.
We, we have talks about trying to mitigate it. We did it before, I understand now that it wasn't nearly long enough. But we did that route for a month, and we also did down to Pine Creek and, you know, loop out to the west side for a month. And people just, we didn't get any response at all, not one ride out of either of those. But it's, uh, I think we're kind of learning about the advertising part of it better. And then, you know, studies show you have to, six months might be a better gauge of, and that's a lot of fuel for...
It is.
If you don't have any riders, so.
It might take just, people getting acquainted, after marriage system.
And maybe being more comfortable with being able to call and talk to someone that knows what they're talking about, knows the information, that can, you know, relay what it is that we have going on.
And as far as the money aspect, most of us spend more money.
Yes, yes.
So it's a case of us paying taxes to the federal government and having it returned between counties? But we don't use the New Jersey bill.
Yes, yeah.
Those federal dollars are coming down through the state when they're put out by the state to go down the side of it. Now it'd be a great time to tell us what day you have lunches and what age are people who will come to lunches, and what time, and those type of things, Andrea?
We have lunches Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that we serve in the senior center, and that's right at noon, and anyone is welcome. We ask for a donation, kind of a suggested four dollars if you're over sixty, but anyone under sixty, we charge six dollars. Love kids, love kids, I know, seriously reduce rate. But we have a nice group that comes to lunch, and speaking of the lunches, we are looking for a new cook. But we've had a bit of a change in the kitchen, so we're interested in a lady who actually worked in Harney County for twelve years at their senior center. So we're talking with her, and, but in the meantime, my staff and myself included have been cooking. So we've got some good comments on the food. I don't know if that's happened, but it's all them, not me. But it's been kind of fun to sort of mix it up, and it was a team-building experience, let me tell you. How it's all in the kitchen.
For years, I always tried to make it Friday, but it's been getting busy, busy right now. Haven't made it for Friday dinner, kind of lunch in a long time. But it's always good food. Also, if anybody out there has excess garden vegetables, can you take a section?
Absolutely. If we can't use it in our kitchen, we would put it out, where we put bread donations or other food donations in the community, and mix it up.
I'm thinking, because usually I grow two zucchinis and a half dozen yellow squash, but they was mislabeled. So I have two zucchinis and a half dozen zucchinis. So I give them to the hospital and I give them to the senior center. Anything else?
No, just, uh, thank you for everything that you do over there and all the people that work over there. Really important, Archie, just, I just thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your support and, yeah, we can do it with the, for you guys still, it's a win-win.
You work for the whole county. We appreciate that.
Could I leave just a little light reading with Denise for you guys? I love light reading. It's just like what we're doing.
Of course, for Archie, maybe read it to him.
Normal person.
Let me have Chase here. How about the Lake County Detention IGA?
Give the proclamation to Commissioner.
Do you read that first?
And also, okay, you want the proclamation first?
I can do IGA, that's fine. You do IGA first.
You'll counter.
So we need the IGA. It's what I believe Lake County Juvenile Department had with, uh, I've been counting juvenile detention for some time in my short three and a half years. We've been into the IGA with every year. Last year, the cost went up. Last year, the cost went up a little bit. This year, it's the same cost as it was last fiscal year, so no change, no change in the IGA. Sadly, we've used our shared beds this last fiscal year. We've had some precarious crimes, sex offenses, some assaults. And then more recently, we had a burglary where a cat was decapitated, a kitten.
Did you caught that person?
We caught both individuals involved. Actually, there were three, so we're working with the third one right now, beating her real dead. So that was, we used our shared beds. It's nothing to look forward to, but it's nice to have in event that we need it.
And just for the audience on the video, this is for juvenile detention.
Juvenile detention.
We do not have the ability to accommodate here, so we contract with family.
Actually, we're two hundred and twenty bed days a year, which equates to about fifty-five bed days a quarter.
Roughly twenty-four thousand. But hopefully, this coming year is not hectic. We are to, well, I come to come on, Commissioner?
Yeah, we'll do.
And standard. And then proclamation. Would you like to read the proclamation?
Actually, it should come from the Board of Commissioners. It's Board of Commissioners proclamation.
No, no way you understand. No, you're clear.
I knew you was going to say that. I could defer to the Chair, but no. So it would be appropriate to use proclamation today, because it's for the whole week, this week. So, Mr. Chair, I'll read it. The Lake County Board of Commissioners, whereas Lake County Community Justice is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals uphold the law with dignity, while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals are trained professionals to provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals advocate community and restore, restorative justice, and whereas Lake County Community Justice Professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities, and there, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the Lake County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July seventeenth to the twenty-third, twenty sixteen, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision, and encourage all citizens to honor these community justice professionals and to recognize their achievements. That's the proclamation. With that, thank you all so very much. As I tell a lot of people out there, whenever I tell them how many people felony probation we have, and ask them how many probation offers do you think we have, they have no idea of what you guys do, humans and women out there. So thank you so much. Be safe at all times. As we know, in society today, there's a lot of negative out there towards all of us in the public, in the government. Be safe, and thank you so much for what you guys do from the top down all the way. Thank you.
There was one word that I had to look up. Whereas we can't, community justice professionals advocate community and restorative justice, restorative justice. Can you explain what that means to the audience?
Restorative justice, that's holding offenders accountable and restoring the victims' faith in the justice system as well. Victims have been recognized, obviously, and so it's working with the offender to recognize the fact that they have victimized, find empathy and restitution and give back, to not just the victim, but also the community. Because when a victim's victimized, it also affects the community.
It's a more comprehensive restoration of justice with the person and the community and the victims.
Commonly. So also the invites out there, we're hosting a luncheon in recognition of our community justice professionals. They'll be Thursday in the Memorial Hall, eleven forty-five, it'll be pizza, salad, dessert, and appropriate beverages.
And Pampick at Large invited?
Excuse me?
Pampick at Large invited?
Sure, absolutely.
They own the cameras, so they might. Thank you.
Just that, I appreciate you in the proclamation and uh, again, it's, it's the work. Well, and I know Pam and Kristen left, but uh, it's the work that the staff do during the day out. They're held in high regard, they have high expectations put on them and day to day, they, they pull through.
And I was, I had to retain one of the pre-approach, the other Friday, I was impressed. I liked the way you guys worked with the folks, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Want to stick around Dave? Are you sure?
Thank you guys, appreciate you very much.
Mental Health slash Protocol Services Amendment.
This amendment, for Kimberly Lindsay, our junior director, is for our after-hours, after-hours calls. They, that's where our call is forwarded to and they initiate the process. And there's a slight increase to last year's rate, although she doesn't know exactly how much that is because she doesn't have last year's contract, so she probably won't get that information. It's an annual contract with protocol.
Take your back tomorrow.
Seems like we just did an amendment the other day that I can't remember off the top of my head. It might have been incredible.
It was.
It was incredible.
One of the candy wells.
Mr. Berman, you packed the room. Only left his examiner. On that, you ran everybody off.
Okay, I went out, we got that uh, Park and Rec grant for the ski hills, for the ski wells, campsites. I went out for three bids on the, on the well and the frying industries come in the lows, they came in at thirty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars compared to.
The other.
The other, the other two coming around forty-seven. So I want to award frying industries a bid. I followed up with some questions, Commissioner. Winners had on some start times and when they can do it. So I called Fry and he said they can start within two weeks of when we board, too, when I call them, they have a good start. They said it could take two days, it could take one month, it just depends on how, it's the nature of the beast as well, girl. And sometimes it just doesn't go as easy as it has been, it just falls through.
Well, you know what's down below.
Right, right, so.
And for clarification to the audience, this is from a Park and Rec grant?
Yes.
What was the match on?
Uh, yeah, there's a map, the, the, there's a.
Right, ten percent was.
Yeah, like ten percent match. So the grant, which we've got that, and then we also, with Camps and Wells Road Department helping out, we have a community service helping out and we have a COIC youth work crews helping us out with the, the hand-on stuff. Up in the well, as far as campsites and all that.
So for your, can you give a large picture of where we're going with this well? It'd be for the ski hill.
Well, it'll be, what it'll do, it'll bring more opportunity to our, our ski hill for different venues. Our summertime stuff, along with the ski, the skiing, it just adds to it, it makes it more usable, user-friendly for the public to be able to use that campsite, they can come up to a camp, they can hike, ride bikes, just nature walk, whatever the case may be.
I'm real excited about the work you've done on this, the Highlanders, because of getting the water sits and their position at the next level, like you say, plus the camping, RV spots and all that. It gives opportunity for that area to be used so much more. He was talking about the match, a lot of that's in progress.
Yes.
Now, then the Highlanders, they have agreed to, as far as the wellhouse and that building, they're going to do that construction site.
Yes, as a group, yes.
That'll be part of the end kind, cover the match and everything, so pulling all the plans together, thank you very much.
The base part is, is the potable water.
Yes.
Which we have to test at least once a year.
Right, yes. That'd be normal, normal maintenance, checking. And.
Yeah, we've been discussing well here for multiple years and.
And for the record, it's, it's not going to be full hook, full hookups for the camp, for the RVs, it'll be water at the RV where they can go get their water in a bucket or something, just I don't know, people are thinking that we're going to do full hookups.
Yeah.
We're not doing that at this time, we're just doing, we're, they have water, same with ten sites, there'll be a frost feed that they're.
It's a dry camp with water accessibility for.
Right, because a lot of people have come to me and said, oh, full hookups, I said, no, we're not doing that yet, maybe down the road, not right now.
And also, can be used for fire suppression?
Yes, yes, we've got something to talk about when we first started doing that, you know, it, it would help make it as a base camp for one, and if they do, at some point, we can make, where they can get water or.
What size will pump will be done in the well?
I don't know, I don't know the specifics on that, I know it's a six-inch casing that'll be coming out and that's plenty to operate for what we want to do there.
Can I say about building up the tinder?
What I've talked with Dave is, is they're, they're going with six inch and it depends on the resource they receive and then he'll sort of make a decision on the size of pump that, you know, I'm, I'm like you, I'm hopeful that it has enough volume and we can put a pump in it where they could do tinders and stuff, that'd be great. We gotta find out what the resources down there at the ground. I think it's going to be plenty, but you never know.
If active resource and adequate pump for tinders, it could be a power camp that's also the revenue.
Yeah, exactly, Ken, that's the, that's the way we've all, you, all of us have been looking over the years trying to find a way, and I believe the Highlanders are doing some work on the, the structure up there too, the kitchen part of.
Yes, they have already. Already did the floors.
From fire camps to weddings to receptions or whatever, it gives opportunity for the Highlanders.
Taking another step up, yes, in the chief.
Yep.
Very good project, thank you.
So your recommendation that tomorrow we'll act on that for Friday industry to come out.
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow.
And you have an agreement with them, verbal agreement with them, that it'll be done within, depending on what they hit this year, so it can be.
As of right now, it's a verbal, but once I work him, we'll do a written contract of the timeframe and all that.
Because the second part of it for pump house and everything, they need time to get that ready to build out for the vault of grave. Very good work on that, thank you for following up on that timeframe.
Next topic is the flooring.
Yeah, I went out, I only got two bids, I tried others, they never, it responded. Well, it was the people that did this carpet and they didn't return any of my calls. So I continued with the two that I got, which was uh. Uh, four coverings international, and then I went to diamond over in Flamin'. Diamond come in a little bit higher, but the reason why it came in a little bit higher was due to the quality of the carpet, uh, strength, durability, and lasts longer compared to what they did for the floor covering international. Coming in as, so it's a little bit more, but I, I recommend going with diamond due to that, the longevity of the carpet and durability.
Uh, I don't recollect which flooring carpet in the courthouse we're looking at.
The pre-model.
Down in the jail.
Yeah, on the.
Sheriff's.
Sheriff's appropriation.
And we're doing that last, we're not going to do it first this time.
You, if you do it first, you'd be given business to obtain.
We've still got shillings to do and just a little note, anyway, we're on this topic, is we're, we're close on the community correction side of completing all we have is ceiling and flooring, on the community correction side, probation side. Reason why we're behind on the sheriff's side is due to the plumbing issues we're having, I'm looking, I'm getting a bid on redoing all the plumbing in the ceiling, that, too, it's just still leaking. And I, we don't want to complete it anymore, it's leaking. So, uh, we decided to go get paid and see what it would cost to redo all the plumbing from the, on that side.
Get it all done, instead of patch it.
It's not going to be a hundred percent, but it'll be a lot better than it is now. We'll be able to control it a little bit.
Not eliminate the control.
Right, right.
We'll act on this one, I think we do. Consideration. Is this yours?
Now, so you're done, I didn't, so you'll, you'll, you'll make the recommendation tomorrow on the floor? Thank you guys.
Thank you, Dave. ATV grant, this was the one Commissioner put in for, um, last week when you were gone. I met with John Lane and Wade Mosby, Rob Thornton, and others. I've talked to Dan, I, I wonder if we should, do you think I want to just sit in?
Yeah, what this is, this nonprofit group, ATV, puts waypoints out at major intersections so that people transfers into county on specified roads, limited. When they come to an intersection, they'll know what point, waypoint, amount to say, so that they can be able to navigate on to other places. More of a safety aspect.
Yeah, and narrow it down on the, it's a pass through to the county. The match to it is all in kind, the nonprofit is putting up, ministered through us. On our county roads, we had a determination for ATV signage to, that wasn't what we really needed to do, but there is opportunity for kiosks in safe areas within the right of way. And so that's where the ATV group and where the road department got to is some kiosk areas. They have, if I'm not mistaken, about twelve areas that they're going to give to us and I'll review those two with our road department to make sure that they're in a safe place. You have to think about ATV's, artwork in the kiosk, you need that to be safe. That's on the county side, on the Forest Service slash B L M side, I think you're going to do some other type of signage. Anyways.
It'd be enhancing ATV recreation.
I thought, absolutely, absolutely.
That's what's the overall intent.
And so, Ann, it's just, we need, we're, have this grant that we'll approve tomorrow. And I just, or Dave, know of you, it'll be all administered through your office and it's a pass through for the county, uh, through, through this nonprofit. Is there anything, since I talked to you, that we need to be aware of or anything?
The match is split between volunteer labor and it looks like a cash match of a thousand dollars for the kiosk stands. And I need to verify if that kiosk stands. In, you know, we had a lot of different conversations, I felt at one point in time, it sounded like some of these materials were available through the B L M, and I don't know if that match is because of those materials being available or, or if there is truly a cash match on our side for that purchase.
I, I remember reading that and I just misstated it because it says all in kind, but it does talk about cash and cash can be the purchase of some of the materials for that.
So I just, I need to touch base with the group and clarify what exactly that is.
I understand from them that they're going to cover such, but.
And it could be them, yes.
It could be the holiday that.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding too, so.
Okay.
I, I misstated, but with the, that there was no, basically no cash match, match for us. If you would clarify on that, Ann, but yeah, I think even without tomorrow.
Yeah.
Except that.
Yeah, if need be, I can write a check five hundred, and you write a check five hundred.
On your account, but.
On my account, I haven't got no money.
I just, I, I think everything's going to be, it's going to work out really good, is the group, that's John Lane, Wade Mosby, not Wade Mosby, Wade.
Brian.
Brian. Mosby, that's for him. Anyway, um, they're very, very enthusiastic and they will make things happen.
And it's kind of add on county administered roads, but also real land management and forest shows. And both the relationships are more.
Well, and I've seen quite a bit more ATV use, it seems to be even out my way. Going up through, going around, I'm on Thomas Creek area, you know, and around town, it's a bar, so.
To me, there may have concern about ETB on roads when it first came, but if you own a little pet or a bison, I don't see it. I mean, it's no different, but in reality, I don't see it, that must difference.
Kind of like deer and cows and just all kinds of hazards on the road, you have to wear.
Everybody needs to be attentive. Thank you, Ann.
Yes.
Thanks, Ann.
Fleet vehicles are.
So this is for our purchase of our vehicles that were approved during budget process. This year we're on schedule to replace two of the sheriff's vehicles. So this are used just for that purchase. This does not include outfitting, of course, like those through a different process.
And it will go on the side of the vehicles for the year.
That, that's part of the other process.
Now, the vehicle is being replaced, would they go to a cell block or to other functions in the county?
They'll go to other functions, they go to reserve because I'm switching out. Next year we'll sell two additional expeditions, we'll be free of expeditions other than our transport.
I come to come on.
Correct. That's it.
Any liaisons update, sir?
Sure, um, not really liaisons update, I guess, real real job of the road department right now and that's always fun. I mean, um, by statute, I am not the road boss, I'm the official, so I'm just, if there's any unique road issues come up, I'm the go-to person, I've notified, um, Forest Service, B L M, State Forestry, ODOT knows. If there's an evening call of an accident or if there's a fire, we have to look at some road closures to get ahold of me. And so, continuing with that, Delbert Davis is the foreman, he's the one doing all the management out there of the crew, along with Dusty Khan, that's helping keep on the administrative side. Can't say enough about all the crews, road departments, since you're rich retirement and uh, those men and women out there just doing us a fantastic job. And so, as you know, you see me coming in a little bit different hours or on and off, I'm just trying to not be in the way, just trying to give them the support they need to continue operations, so we're doing good, doing good there. Uh, we, we took the ratification off on the Smoot Museum because we'd already, talking with legal counsel, we'd already made that decision. But we are right there at the final part of getting the Smoot Museum, uh, over into county ownership. Attorney General's office has signed as of late yesterday, early this morning. And so now the attorneys, our attorney and their attorney, will be getting a little bit more paperwork together. At this time, I'll just say it comes with substantial maintenance and upgrades to the building and it will come with five years of operating cost, six thousand dollars a year. And this is all to be fully agreed upon, it's all in writing now. Don't want to say too much until it's. Don't want to say too much until it's absolutely official, we'll work on a press release with the DAR ladies. Denise, obviously, paying for it downhill, she's wanting to work on that for me. But we're getting there, and that's, that's a great opportunity for our community, and thank you to the board, you and Ann, for the support of having me go forward with that. As I tell people, it's, it's truly, in my sense, not really a museum, it's a preservation of a house of a lifestyle. And as we get it in ownership and get it back open, it's, it's going to be, I, I really encourage people to go see it. But we're, it'll be managed by our local museum and their board, which they've agreed to. So, we will have a press release here as soon as everything's final, but we're, we're right there, so.
It is, and I feel as deserving of heritage.
Oh, yes, some of our local heritage history that, the more I learn, every time I go over there, it's lovely. And I'm not a museum buff, I'm just the person that was in line with the stars when there were things happening. And our local DAR, DAR ladies, I can't say enough about also. So, we'll try to capture all that in an official press release whenever we're able to put that together with the state local DAR.
The main gist on it, just for the people on the audience, that DAR was having difficulty sustaining it. And they asked for us if we could assist and pretty much take it on so that we would deserve it in the long term. Appreciate you good work on that. So, also, back on the road official, just for the folks on the audience, with Rick's retirement, ORS basically requires that we have somebody. And until we can field a decision, who was a logical person with some background in road and so forth, just appreciate taking that on.
Well, thank you, and, and yeah, and it's by statute, AOC made the recommendation for us to do that. And thank you to Dan and you for having the faith in me to do that. But it's a team, it's all of us that make it.
Have a good group.
Make it, yes, make it happen, so yeah. I just want to make sure people know that it's by statute, it's not, I'm not the road boss.
We just need to go through the process of replacing Rick after his retirement.
It's just a short interim time until we're able to get a replacement.
Now, you said, anything comes about, like one thirty at night, your phone number is.
Two one nine one eight nine four, and that's, that's absolutely the, I know you sort of looked at me smiling, but that's, that's, that's real. That's the way it is. And so, if there's some kind of accident or whatever, I need to be notified, and I will go out there for the protection of Lake County to document and bring it to the board and to our, our whole process, make sure. And it also comes with having to follow up and check out how many road vacations, alley vacations and those type of things. So, there's a guideline that comes with it, but it, it's for the county's protection.
Exactly, safe for county interest.
Yep, so. Other than that, I've just been relaxing, taking it easy. Now, the, the other, I guess, the other sort of quick, there's nothing quick about it, but mental health, our RFP, we went to those RFPs, as everybody knows, with a recommendation came to us to, to consider Lake County Hospital, Lake.
Oh, they, Lake Health.
Lake Health District is what their official name is now. So, with that, Jay and Denise and Kimberly, we're all looking at a few different contracts and different things to start that process. Jay was off last week and Charlie was working, but not here. So, you'll, the Board of Commissioners will see us working on that. Any recommendations or anything in that, get with Jay, get with Denise, anything you think. Gobi will be here on Wednesday, I believe you're going to meet with him around one.
I never had a time to meet, but I'll be here.
Okay, and, and I'm going to meet with him later on that afternoon. The uniqueness of the whole mental health world and everything is we, we tend to think of it globally as all one service, which it is, but the money stream with the Medicaid, which is governed by Gobi, is another stream of dollars and individual care dollars that come through us. So, Gobi's going to be meeting with the hospital and with us individually, and that'll give us more sense of the partnership and everything that we're looking at as we start putting this contract together.
For the audience and everybody's clarification, you have the, the district, Lake Health District, let's say provide different functions, life hospice, long-term care, hospital. When we say contracting with the hospital, it's actually with the mothership, I'd call it, the district. If the mental health would be just another part of the district function, saying that's long-term care, hospice, et cetera. So, who would be contracting would be with the district.
With, yes, it would be with the district, the governing board for the, the district. And, and we would, we as commissioners would stay, the Board of Commissioners, Lake County, still, still be the mental health authorities. So, ultimately, we're still responsible, we just contract with somebody, put the services in.
Services.
Yep, so. Anyway, it's a lot going on, be sure on the contract side of it, anything that, whether there's any concerns or any, not concerns, any things we need in there to make sure that the, the operations get on the ground appropriately and continue that way. That's what we need in the contract, get it to Denise, Jay, any thoughts you have at all.
We're learning more when Kevin Campbell Lewis here.
Tomorrow, yes.
And what I've got is the Senate Bill thirty-two, the natural gas expansion to rural communities, going on several meetings. So, haven't had a chance to review, but the summation of that been sent out, and we'll comment on that sometime next week. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to review it. The wood smoke, another one of the state task force, gonna meet in next week, and that should conclude our involvement with that, basically summarizing.
Back on the Senate Bill thirty-two, I, I definitely understand what you're saying because it sounds like that the propane and the specific, not of utility, I think it's been pretty strong with a lot of cloud. So, as we ask you to push and push on certain things, it's going to be interesting how much cloud the big corporations had with this committee.
Basically, but the scenario there is, you have propane association, they're looking out for their interests. Has provided energy, the specific power provided, it's, it's, and you've got natural gas that provides competing. It's business competition.
It is.
Last meeting we had, I think I made a little inroad with more of these propane folks.
Good.
But I'm not sure if that in front made it up to top board director.
We're nicely saying there is big business and middle even committee, thanks. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could buy propane at the fair market price, same with natural gas, I'll stop there. As you know, the forest supervisor has taken a job back in the Midwest so she can be close to her family and father and so forth. And they have a little function today, I have the interagency, if you'd like to have, have twelve in.
Yeah, that's a twelve today, isn't it?
Yes.
And then again, Thursday night?
Friday night at the Land Park.
Is that Friday?
I saw you, you know.
Time was that, I didn't write it down, I don't know what time. Six. Are you going to make, it's today, or are you going to make it today?
In ten weeks. We've got two hours to check.
You're going.
Car somewhere, I'd like to know for tomorrow addition, people like to be here to address some nuisance tomorrow, so they'll be audition tomorrow, Denise. Someone like, we've been working with ODOT and trying to reduce the speed, I got a complaint yesterday that I need to follow up on a phone call today. But we're getting close to maybe getting signs that, tell people that they're actually entering that.
Where, where is that?
Summer Lake.
Oh, Summer Lake, it's still.
We've still worked, been working on that for a year, a little bit here, there, a little bit there. And Saturday is not a county business per se, but just for general vote, they'll be able to celebrate Easter festivities Saturday. And on the broadband that we've been working on, transferring out, as you met, as we mentioned earlier, we received that grant to do feasibility information gathering, mostly in strategicizing. I'll be able to get logged into underserved areas, notably Warner Valley, and we joined with MODO County for supplies. By the way, we have a very productive, informative meeting with the Chester Robertson, the administrator of yesterday. It was full of information, I had was full, and he gave us a new idea that we're going to pursue, it's a little premature for the.
I think they're with the county now, it used to be town.
Yeah, he's been with the county for several years now. He looks like a young kid, I'm sure he's aged quick. He's overworked, but anyway, that's not a date. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, and also, we're charging at ten o'clock.